I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Juzenski, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Grippo?
Here.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hamm?
Here.
Ms. Harrigan?
Here.
Mr. Martelli?
Here.
Here.
Thank you very much. I invite everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call for a motion that -- for the election of officials.
I would like to nominate Tony Perigini for Chairman of the Board of Education.
Actually--
Do this other -- oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I move that the biennial election of officers of the Cheshire Board of Education be conducted as described in Policy 9120.
Do we have a second on that motion? Mr. Grippo? Any discussion? Would anybody like to make public comment on the motion that the biennial election of officers of the Cheshire Board of Education be conducted as described in Policy 9120? No? Alright, I'd like to call for a vote to approve the motion that the biennial election of officers of the Cheshire Board of Education be conducted as described in Policy 9120. All in favor? It's unanimous, Ms. Juzenski? Seven-zero. At this point, I'd like to call for nominations for the Chairman of the Board of Education. Mr. Grippo? You've been patient.
Thank you, Mr. Solan. I would like to nominate Tony Perigini for Chairman of the Board of Education, Cheshire Board of Education.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'll make a second call for nominations. Any other nominations? Finally, a third call for nominations for the Chair of the Board. Seeing none, nominations are now closed. At this point, I will distribute--
Do you have a second?
I'm sorry, Ms. Fabiani?
Oh, sir.
Seconds the motion.
Yeah.
At this point, I'll distribute the ballots. If you could please write your name of the person that you'd like to select, Mr. Grippo.
Oh, this is me.
Thank you.
Our names are written up.
I don't believe that there was a world of suspense going into this one, but the vote is unanimous, Ms. Juzenski. Congratulations, Mr. Perigini. The votes, as I said, were seven-zero. So I will pass it over now to you, Mr. Perigini.
Superintendent Solan, members of the Board of Ed, thank you very much for this honor and privilege. I do have something written up I gotta talk about, but if it's okay for anyone else, I'm gonna say something when we do the Board Member introductions in the business meeting. Sorry for your guys.
Sure.
Thank you. So on next to the officer elections, we have the seat of Vice Chairman or Chairperson. Are there any nominations? Mr. White?
I nominate Adam Grippo for Vice Chair.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing as there are no other nominations, is there a second? Faith, Faith seconds the motion. We'll now pass out the green ballots for the Vice Chairman seat. Please write it, please write in the name of the nominee you are voting for. No, thank you. It is unanimous. The tally is seven-zero. Adam Grippo is the Vice Chair of the Board of Ed. Congratulations, Adam. Up next, we have the role of Secretary. Are there any nominations for the role of Secretary for the Board of Education? Faith?
I'd like to nominate Kathryn Helen, please. Excellent.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing as there are none, Superintendent Solan has hung out a blue ballot for a Secretary position. Please indicate your--
Do you want a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll say--
Is there a second on the motion? Anne Harrigan seconds, thank you, Anne. So as I was just saying, please fill out the blue ballot right in the name of the selection. I know there are many choices here, but you'll figure it out. Kathryn Helen, you are our Secretary. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Seeing as there are no officer roles to be elected, is there a motion to adjourn this organization meeting? Kathryn, motion? Is there a second? Adam seconds. All in favor of adjourned this organization meeting? Passing unanimously, thank you. Board. Yeah, thank you. We're now moving on to our regular business meeting agenda. We're still gonna do a call to order. Yeah. We have a call to order. Mr. Juzenski, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Grippo?
Here.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hamm?
Here.
Ms. Harrigan?
Here.
Mr. Martelli?
Here.
Here.
Thank you, Carol. Seeing as where we did the pledge of allegiance in the last organization meeting, we don't have an agenda for tonight. On item being the agenda, we had an opportunity for new Board Members to give an introduction. With that being said, I welcome new Board Members, and whoever wants to go first, have at it.
Name is Tim White. Grew up here in Cheshire. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you. I appreciate it.
My name is Faith Hamm. I grew up in Middlefield, and I am honored to be on the Board, and I look forward to working with everybody in a collegial manner. Thank you.
Good evening, Andrew Martelli. I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm honored, I'm humbled, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. And I just wanted to say special thanks to Van, Marlene, and Superintendent for spending four hours with us at home and school last week and going through a lot of details on the Cheshire Public Schools that I had no idea about. I look forward to learning and working and moving things forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Tony. Yeah, just one more quick comment for people watching. Anybody, I really strongly encourage you, if you ever have any concerns, definitely feel free to reach out to me. Phone is probably gonna be best. I don't really do Facebook all that much. My three and five-year-old take too much of my time, but I wanna be as available as I can be because I know this is a very important role that each of us have. And so, please, don't be shy, especially if you disagree with something that I'm doing. Give me feedback. It could be helpful to me if I'm missing something. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I'd like to say a couple things. I keep it short. First of all, I just wanted to say my sincere thank you to my fellow Board Members for having the confidence in electing me as into the role of Chair. I am truly grateful and humbled by this privilege. You have my word, I'll execute this role to the best of my abilities, and I'm anxious and quite frankly, very excited to begin working with all of you. For me personally, it's essentially a new day. We have fresh new faces, a lot of new energy. I think we have a great Board to work with. The role of Chair, as some of us already know, is not an easy role. I spent ten years watching other Chairs and said to myself, eh, it doesn't look so bad. Well, just this week, actually within the past few days, I've come to appreciate the challenges this role actually entails. Kathryn, as my predecessor in this role, I now understand why you're smiling at me when I-- You must be thinking, this poor SLB has no idea what's coming. But in all seriousness, I'd like to thank the New Let the Board Members who spent months preparing and successfully running for their seats tonight. It's not an easy feat. Congratulations for your election win. But the election, that was the easy part. I hope you all, I hope you're all, all you new Members, I hope you're snugly strapped in and have your vomit bags at the ready. It's gonna be one heck of a ride. Challenging but fun and rewarding ride for certain. The voters have bestowed upon you, all of us really, a great responsibility. I know you won't take this role lightly, and again, congratulations. I do wanna add for folks that you Members, they have not wasted any time getting acclimated to their roles. In fact, right after the election, they immediately started the process of getting up to speed, which is essentially asking many questions, and then many more questions, and then even many more questions, as some of the staff already knows. And that's great. You're seeing that energy and positivity, and it's refreshing. So they've been working pretty hard, going through our bylaws, policies, agendas, basically how meetings are run. So they have not wasted any time, and we're glad to see that. For the existing Members, Kathryn, Anne, and myself, I know I speak for all of us when I say welcome, and we look forward to working with you. As we all know, teamwork is key. The Board functions most effectively when it's able to collaborate, work together, and reach a consensus, even while debating topics that might be at hand. Every Board here has the qualities to make teamwork happen, and every Board Member here tonight, I'm sure, will help make this happen. It's in our DNA. Every Board Member has a personal interest in ensuring that the business of the Board ensures the best possible outcomes for our students. At the end of the idea, this is why we've all been chosen to be here. This goal is the great equalizer for the Board, the student outcomes, as are the voters of our great town. The voters have spoken in this election. You can interpret those results however you see fit, but they understand that education is perhaps our greatest asset, one which impacts all residents of Cheshire. The voters take it seriously and have asked the New Let the Board to ensure it stays that way. In other words, don't mess this up. And I just wanna end with this. For those of you, and see that we have a record turnout tonight, for those of you out there, those of you who are watching tonight, if there's any doubt as to whether or not we, or myself personally, in the role of Chair, or as Board Members, are vested in positive outcomes for our school district and our town, look no further than this picture. This picture is a picture of my daughters I took in 2009, when I, I'm sorry, no, 2013, I think, when I reran for election. At the time, they were seven and nine years old. And I raise this because when I started, they just entered into Cheshire Public School Systems. They traversed through the school district, and right now, Nicole, my oldest, is graduating next year. Victoria, my youngest, is two years behind her. The decisions that I have made, and Board Members made during this time, over the last ten years, do impact my children, all of our children, yours, and our town, and also future students. I say "future" because our decisions, sometimes, we don't see the effect of that until several years out. So that's how important and impactful this role of the Board of Ed actually is. I've witnessed these decisions on my kids, other kids, and our town members. I'm also reminded of our decisions when I received my property tax bill. I was once told that when I initially got on the Board of Ed, that I was braying when I spoke up here. Well, all I can say is, you'd be braying up here too if you saw my property tax bill. But seriously, I bring this up is because our decisions go beyond our students. It goes to our town, affects everyone. So this is serious. We are vested, there are Members here on the Board who currently have children go to the school system or had children go through our school system. So I can tell you, we're personally vested in this, and we're gonna do our best as a Board to make those positive decisions for our school district. So again, thank you. Thank you for your opportunity. And with that being put aside, let's get back to work. Up next is Student Representative Report.
Hi, I'm RJ Streeter. I'm a senior at Cheshire High School. Welcome new Board Members, and Izzy and I are really excited this year.
So basically, I'm also, I'm Izzy. I'm also a senior. Our role as student representatives is to give a bit of perspective on the happenings and the perspectives of students at Cheshire High School, and hopefully, that will help make decisions in the Board of Education to work towards fitting the needs and wants of our students in our communities. So, thank you very much. We're very excited and welcome new Board Members.
I'm sorry, thank you, Isabel and RJ. The Board Members have any questions for our Student Representatives? Yes, Tim?
How were you selected?
Oh, gosh. Well, that's a good question. Me personally, I really do care about the school system, so I kind of shoved myself in the face of my principal and was like, this would be a wonderful thing that I really, really, truly care about. So I personally pursued this position because I feel like it's a really, really fundamental part of our community as students and as a town as a whole, so.
You asked for it. That's a good way to get through life. You have to ask for stuff.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our Representatives on the Board? Seeing as Izzy, I think you're off the hook early tonight. Thank you, Isabel and RJ.
Off next?
Next is approval of minutes. We have approval for the minutes of the Board of Education Business Meeting held November 21st, 2019. Is there a motion? Anne Harrigan?
I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education Meeting held November 21st, 2019.
Is there a second? Kathryn seconds. Discussion. Is there any changes to the minutes? Seeing as there's no discussion, I'll read the motion. The motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board Education Meeting held November 21st, 2019. All those in favor? Don't try and do math here. It is unanimous. Thank you, Board of Ed. The motion passes. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
We do not have any correspondence this evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
You're gonna have to stay in that line quite a bit. Thank you.
I know.
Before I move forward, I do have an amendment to make to the agenda. If the Board indulges me, or I'll make the amendment. I move that the Board moves the Audience Section up after Superintendent's report, just so that folks out there can come up here and if they wanna say something, and not have to wait for the rest of the meeting. Is there a second on the amendment? All those in favor? It is unanimous. We have moved the Section 6 up to after Superintendent's report. Thank you. Having said that, Jeff, we have your Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The last couple of weeks have been somewhat uneventful, given the Thanksgiving recess, but yesterday was a really nice highlight where our Cheshire Public Schools Teacher of the Year, Cheshire High School Teacher Gina Carrato, was recognized at an award ceremony held at the Bushnell, and it was really a nice opportunity to see all of the different Teachers of the Year from the districts across Connecticut, and see the State Teacher of the Year, who's from right down the road in Prospect, acknowledged yesterday. So that was really a nice event, and on the flip side of that nice event, this was the first week that I started getting up at 4:00 AM to worry about snow days. And so, it's a sign of the season that we're in the winter for sure now, and hopefully, this will be short-lived, the snow day call. So, that's it for me.
Did I, if I'm mistaken, Superintendent Solan, did I not read recently there was a supermarket challenge held here in Cheshire, or was one upcoming between students and staff?
A supermarket challenge? I'm not sure. Maybe Izzy and RJ, does that sound familiar to you guys?
The supermarket challenge?
Yeah, I thought I read something in the Record Journal about that.
Oh.
I'll be--
I'm just not hip with the times, I guess.
Probably being planted. I will find out for--
That was packing groceries. It shopped right before the Thanksgiving--
Hey, that guy, picture you're doing that.
--holiday, yeah, for fundraiser, for food pantry.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent Solan. Are there any Members from the Board questions in the Superintendent's Report? Seeing as there is none, I'm gonna open it up to audience participation. If there's anybody out there that has anything they wanna say to the Board of Ed, may do so freely.
Looks like I'm rushing to beat everybody. Good evening, Rob Oras, 71 Autumn Court, also a Member of the Town Council. I just wanted to come here tonight to congratulate all of you who won election in November. Mr. Grippo and Mr. Perigini, congratulations on your new positions here on the Board of Ed. On behalf of the entire Council, I wanna congratulate all of you, let you know that we're in this with you. We're looking forward to working with all of you to advance what is in the best interest of this town. We've got a lot of important tasks to address, school modernization amongst many other things. So I just wanted to be here to let you know, we're here to support you from the Council perspective to the best we can. I know you're here to support us on our side of the street as well, and just wanna let you know, I'm looking forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Oras, and I speak for the whole Board. We're looking forward to working with the Town Council closely, so thank you very much.
Sylvia Nichols, Sylvia Nichols, 100 Barrett Drive, also Town Council, and I will be briefer than he. I look forward to being the appointed Liaison to the Board of Education by Town Council once again, so I will be as often as I can at these meetings. I apologize, I just came from under the workbench and I have pine sap all over me, but congratulations to all of you. Look forward to the committee, and we've got a lot to work to do together. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the Board of Education?
I'm good.
You're a good guy? You sure? Okay.
You're the only one left.
Thank you. We're moving on to reports of the standing committees. Before we get into it, I'd like to read out the committee assignments, and I apologize to my fellow Board Members. I had sent a wrong draft as assignment to Carol, and it turns out Carol didn't get it. So I'm gonna read out the committee assignments, and you will see some communication from Carol or next day or two on the printout. So let's just go through this. On Curriculum, we have Faith Hamm, Anne Harrigan, and Tony Perigini. Faith Hamm is Chair. On Finance, we have Adam Grippo, Faith Hamm, and Kathryn Helen. Legislative Committee is myself, Adam Grippo, and Anne Harrigan. Liaison, it's Kathryn Helen, Andrew Martelli, and Tim White. Personnel, and I'm sorry, Kathryn is Chair Liaison. Personnel, it's Tim White, it's Chair, myself, and Anne Harrigan. Planning Committee, Chair is Andrew Martelli, Tim White, and Kathryn Helen. Policy Committee, Chair is Adam Grippo, Tim White, and Kathryn Helen. Public Information Committee, Andrew Martelli is Chair, Faith Hamm, and Anne Harrigan. Transportation, Chairperson is Tim White, and Board Members will, I'll assign as needed when transportation actually has to meet. School Modernization Committee, we're gonna talk about under New Business. As far as Liaison assignments, ACIS, it's myself. Cheshire Education Foundation, it's myself. Adult Education is Anne Harrigan. Cabe, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, is Adam Grippo. Calendar Committee is Kathryn Helen. Cheshire PTA Council is myself. Advisory Council is Kathryn Helen. Professional Development Committee is Faith Hamm. School Partnerships and Business Councils, Andrew Martelli and Tim White. Teacher Evaluation Committee is Tim White. Town Council Liaison is myself. Planning and Zoning Liaison is Andrew Martelli, and Public Building Commission is Adam Grippo. And again, I apologize if you guys are trying to write down feverishly. You'll get electronic copy later tonight. As far as School Representatives, and this is the last part, Chapman, Board Member is Anne Harrigan. Cheshire High School, it's myself. Darcy is Adam Grippo. Dodd is Kathryn Helen. Doolittle is Faith Hamm. Highland is Andrew Martelli. And Norton is Tim White. And I did the best I could to honor those with our kids in the class in the schools to get you assigned to your child's school. So, having that been said, these are the committee and liaison assignments. I gotta apologize to the Board. You will get electronic copy from Carol the next day or two. Thank you. As far as reports of standing curriculums committees, I don't believe we have a report from curriculum as we haven't met since the last time. Is that correct? We do have a meeting coming up, December 9th, on this coming Monday. We'll have a report by the Board at the next meeting. Finance Committee, is there a Finance Committee update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alright, yeah, go ahead. Would you like me to provide the report?
So Vince will provide the financial report.
Yeah, that's fine.
Unless you wanna do it.
You could do it next month. So I will take a little bit extra time because I know we have our new Board Members. And by the way, congratulations, you know, to new Board Members, and congratulations to our new officers, and Mr. Perigini is our Chair. I'm here to support you and do everything I can to make this transition for our new Board Members a little bit easier. So with the financial reports, I would start with the one-pager that just summarizes where we are on a year-to-date basis. It's as of November 30th. You'll see that our budget for this year is $33,356,511. And then, there are the respective columns that show how much has been expended and encumbered, the percent of budget expended and encumbered. That's a new section of the report that Mr. Grippo asked for, so that's now available, Adam. And then, that balance, that current balance column essentially shows how much remaining budget dollars we have that hasn't been encumbered or actually expended as of the date of the report. And then, the projected expenditures, you could see, equal the amount of the budget. So at this point, we're projecting to end the year in balance. As we go through successive months, you'll see that we'll update the report, and I always provide a narrative in this report. The good news in, you know, this month's report, and we're through the first five months of the year, we don't have any significant-- the year, we don't have any significant budget concerns to report. That doesn't mean there aren't adjustments that we're making month over month, but there's nothing that, you know, I'm seeing that is a significant concern in our budget. So we'll continue to manage, you know, accordingly and keep the Board updated through the reports that we provide for the business meeting. And then if there are questions as we go through during the month, you could feel free to email or call me. The second report is just the detail of all the categories that are summarized in the overview. And you'll see that what we do is we do make adjustments as we're going through the year where we have account categories that we believe are going over budget. We offset those with account categories that we believe we can either reduce our expenditures on, or we believe that we will not need the budget dollars that are allocated. And so we're still early in the year, we're still looking good. As we go through the rest of the year and things change, we'll report on those. So with that, I'll pause and ask if there are any questions before we go to the Medical Benefits Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe the last meeting I was able to attend was in October. And thank you for adding the percentage of expended and encumbered, that's very helpful in understanding how things are being expended this year. Since the last time I saw the detailed report, I noticed that people's services and tuition outplacement went from almost a sort of a surprisingly low number to almost 100%. And I was just sort of wondering if you could explain what's occurred since then. Thank you.
I suspected you might ask that question because when we met as of the September report, we were somewhere around 50% that was encumbered. A couple of things, in the September report, there were some settlements that hadn't yet been encumbered, and so those are now encumbered. And we have two additional outplacements that are now encumbered for. So yes, we are up from where we were, but we are still within our budget at this point in time. And that's the ebb and flow. I know you've been on the Board for several years, Adam. There are certain line items that are difficult to project, and the outplacement certainly is one of those. And a typical outplacement can be $100,000 or more. So it does make a large swing in that particular budget line item. But again, I'll stay focused on the fact that we are still expected, based on what we know now, to be within the budget.
Tim.
Yeah, thank you, Vince. Just to be clear on this, you mentioned settlements. So what is it, sort of a discussion between you or the school system and parents? Is that, okay, and you come to an agreement on how to fulfill the IED?
IEP, Individualized Education Plan. So sometimes, you know, families will place students in special education settings outside, and districts are responsible for the educational costs versus other costs that may be associated with it. So we enter into settlement agreements with families on those situations.
Okay. And one other point, just with regard to sort of Board of Ed responsibilities versus Superintendent responsibilities. So we have a list here of basically six large categories with about 60, probably 60 rows across them. The Board of Ed's responsibility is the six categories. And what you do within each of the six categories is your discretion, is that correct? Or do you get the point that I'm getting at? Is that, that was, it's how it's been explained to me in the past, I'm just curious on that.
I think that's probably a fair, rough description of it.
Okay, okay.
You know, the reason we report out on these every meeting, every business meeting, is so that there is a really good sense, not just within those overarching categories, but within the individual line items within them, where our expenditures are. At the end of the year, is, Mr. Manciana said, there's, you know, fluidity to different categories. So, you know, depending on the winter, you know, our oil expenditure could be much higher than expected, or special education situations may evolve that cost more or less. So really, we monitor each line item, and then at the end of the fiscal year, in June, we'll reconcile all accounts to make sure that we spend no more than was allocated through the budget. And that's where we start to really, toward the end of the year, look at how do we size up each individual line item and the six overarching categories.
Okay.
But, you know, we monitor everything collectively.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. I'm just, I guess I was just taking, speaking, I thought it was state law that basically said that, where the Board of Ed is in control of the six categories, and you do, you have discretion within each of the six categories. Maybe I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, I manage that.
Mr. Manciana, may I have more explanation on that?
So the Board policy and state law does require the Board to do one important thing, and that's at the end of the year, to make transfers between, in our case, it's five categories because we take certified salaries and classified salaries. So one category is salaries, then the rest are benefits, instructional, support services, operations, and maintenance. So, you know, what we do here, you know, with the Cheshire Board of Education, is on the last business day of the fiscal year, I think it was June 27th of 2019, Board meets, we provide in advance to the Board the transfers between those five categories to balance out to zero. So the importance of these monthly reports is to make sure that we are trending towards a balanced budget. I'll add, half joking, that if the Board, if we exceed the Board, if the Board exceeds the budget it's been appropriated, the Board members theoretically, in accordance with law, are personally responsible for that overage. So you want to make sure, and I want to make sure that never happens. I promise that will not happen on my watch, because I like my job, and I'd like to keep it. So, yeah, I mean, you're right. Your responsibility at the end of the year is to make those final transfers between the budget categories. And I've already shared with Faith that year-end memo from last year. I'll share it with the Board members again, just so you could see. And it kind of gives a good recap of what happened during the fiscal year, and it shows you what those final transfers were.
Thank you. Catherine, you had a question?
Maybe people already know, but can you just explain the concept of encumbered money out of the, just so that, because I know I didn't really get it at all. So maybe you don't know.
So that column, that's a great question. So all encumbered means is that we've reserved those funds because we know we're going to expend them. So if you look at certified salaries, we've encumbered 96.5% of certified salaries. Certified salaries are teachers, administrators. We know what they're going to be paid for the year, for the most part. So we basically reserve the entire amount that we know we're going to spend against that particular budget line. Other categories, and I'll give you an example, if you look at the larger report, instructional assistants, instructional assistants are non-certified, they're paid hourly. So we don't encumber their salaries. So if you look at year-to-date, the encumbrance and expenditures for the instructional assistant line is 28.8%. So as you look through the rest of these line items, you'll see that some are close to fully encumbered, and the ones that aren't are categories that we typically wouldn't encumber because, you know, A, we don't know what the expense is going to be exactly, like the instructional assistant salaries, or B, and this is important, this is how we manage the budget as we go through the year. You know, we have our non-payroll accounts such as instructional supplies. Each school, each school principal has a budget for instructional supplies, and part of that budget sits in Marlene Solano's office for curriculum. We have a 60% expenditure max cap on right now. So the schools, Marlene cannot expend more than 60% of that instructional supply line because that essentially is what we would use if we have an overage in other categories. What we'll typically do as we get through the first six months of the year, if everything is looking good in the budget, we'll say, you can now expend 70%, 80% as we get to April, and so on, if we can do that. So look at encumbrance and this column as, those are monies that we've either spent or know we're going to spend. And we do adjust it as we go through the year. You know, going back to Adam's question about our outplaced tuition, you know, in September, we had encumbered about 50%, and now we've encumbered about 96.6%. To the extent that, you know, we have a student that their profile changes, and we don't have to have as much money encumbered, we'll release that encumbrance, and that'll free up dollars again. That might have been long-winded and possibly confusing, but it does get easier as you go through the year.
Thank you, Vince.
Are there any other questions on the financial report? Faith?
Just to be sure, so we have, you have the 60% cap, and I just want to understand, this does not in any way compromise materials in the classroom or in any way, or?
No. You know, the best way I can explain it is, we would never compromise on something we have to have in the classroom immediately. But if you think about the budget as, you know, a 12-month cycle where we could spend roughly 8% of the budget, we just put that cap on early in the year so that we know if we have to stop spending, we can, you know, and we would make that trade-off. But we don't prohibit a necessary expenditure at all. But there's really no other safeguard that we have to make sure that we stay within our budget. So that's why as we enter a new fiscal year, we have the brakes on. And then obviously, we manage all the other components of the budget, things like, you know, overtime, you know, and additional hours for us, you know, hourly staff. So all those things, you know, are in place, it's just part of what we do on a daily basis on the operational side. So the Board doesn't have to concern itself with the details of that, but the Board does need to, you know, certainly keep track of where we are with our expenditures on a year-to-date basis. That's why we provide the reports that we do.
Any other questions on the financial report from the Board members? Vincent, you want to give update on the Medical Benefits Report?
Okay. So also included in this month's report is the Medical Benefits Update. This is as of October 31st. What this report basically shows is the status of our health insurance expenditures and the balance in what we call the medical, you know, trust fund or the reserve balance for medical benefits. We are self-insured for all our medical benefit plans that we provide to our employees. And I'll just go down this as quickly as I can. You'll see up at the top right, we started the year with $3.8 million in the medical trust fund. That second section shows that we've contributed $2,726,000 into that fund. So what we do is, from our operating budget, we have $681,500 per month, we put into that fund to pay for our claims. And then you could see in the next section, a month-by-month claim. So in the month of October, our claims were $1,071,956. So if you add the total of the medical claims, year-to-date, were $3,161,566. So we started the year with $3.8 million. Based on contributions less claims, our trust fund balance decreased by that $412,030, leaving us with a trust fund balance as of the end of October at $3,428,082. And right below that, you'll see that we have 4.57 claim months in reserve. The rule of thumb is, we want to have a minimum of three months, two at the lowest end, so between two and three months of medical claims reserve. We're at 4.57, so we've got a healthy balance still. Even though we've decreased it by $412,000 this year, the balance is still healthy. I'm going to just point out two other things, and then we'll get to this next month, we could give you some more detail. Up at the top where we have contributions, you see that our budget is $681,500 per month, that's what goes in. And down in the lower section, we're expecting claims of $750,000 a month. So because we knew we had a healthy reserve balance, you know, we budgeted less than we expect our claims to be this year. Right? So we're, the budget is $681,500, but we know our claims are going to be about $750,000. So it was a given that our trust fund balance should decrease as we go through this year. It was calculated risk. You know, right now, we're looking fine, so we hope that that continues through the course of the rest of the year. But those are the things that we look for. What are our claims monthly? If, to the extent they exceed the $750,000, which they did in October, you know, that trust fund balance will go down quicker, but on a year-to-date basis, we're not off by much. So you'll be seeing this report as part of every month's package as well.
Any questions from the Board members on the trust fund? I knew you had one. Go ahead, Faith.
What happens, could you just explain what's going to happen if this trend, if we continue to get, I assume the $1 million is a truly catastrophic claim. And what happens if we, what safety mechanisms do you have in place if we start to see that claim reserve go?
There's, I guess, a couple of things. First of all, for catastrophic claims, you know, anything over $175,000, that's actually a really good question. We have what's called stop-loss insurance. So any claims above $175,000, our insurance carrier is going to pay us back for those claims. And up in the top section of the report, there's a zero right now, but we would get stop-loss reimbursements back from the insurance carrier. So that would help increase the trust fund balance back up to the extent we're getting stop-loss. So the point is, if we had a $1 million claim, we do have insurance for that. As we go through this year and into next year, if that trust fund balance starts to get towards a two- or three-month reserve, then we would need to increase the budget. And that discussion will come up when we start talking about the budget in January. What's the right number? That $681,500 for, and I see Mr. Grippo is smiling because it was, it's a subject of a lot of discussion around budget time. So is that number the right number for next year? Do we need to increase it? And then what's the impact to the budget if we do increase it?
If I could add on to that, Faith. So we actually had a scenario, I want to say it was four or five years ago, where the Board of Ed's side of the, it's a shared town trust fund, the Town Council has to deal about its own claims on its side. But our portion got below $900,000. If I'm not mistaken, it was like $700,000 and change.
We got well below.
And that didn't happen in the course of a year. It wasn't like we had disastrous claims back-to-back, you know, given months, it's just over Through budget processes, the Boards and Town Councils back then, you know, decided to contribute less, and it drew down. And it got below the two months, actually almost down to one-month reserve toward the end of the school year. In that regard, you know, the Board did work with the Town Council through a budget process, through Finance Committee meetings, you know, as Vincent talked about, and that fund was replenished, was it $900,000 a fund? I forget. It was a hefty contribution the Town Council provided to the Board of Ed for the trust fund for the next budget year. So, you know, that was more of a controlled situation. This $1 million claim line you see for the month of November is not usually the norm. So you see trending here and so forth. I can tell you, especially being in the healthcare biz and the payer side of things, toward the end of the year, you know, folks tend to max out their deductibles, they start, you know, taking advantage of more tests and kind of, and so forth. So we do see a spike up. And I can't say that explains us, you're closer to the claims than we are.
Well, what happens, first of all, most of our employees are in an HSA, and they're on a calendar-year HSA. So as we go into October, November, December, those are typically our highest claims months because employees have met their deductible, you know, their $2,000 or $4,000. If it's family, they have a $4,000 deductible. So by the time they get to the year-end, they've met their deductible, most of the claims come out of, you know, our claim reserve. As we go into January, where the new HSA claim year starts, those employees are paying for those claims in their HSA. So we tend to see lower claims, you know, January through, you know, March, April. So we're at the tail So we're at the tail end of the HSA year. I would expect the next couple of months' claims to be high, but then they drop, you know, pretty quickly into January, February, March.
And I don't think I've experienced a situation where mid-budget year, we've had to approach town council for emergency funding for that. So that's why I was kind of laughing earlier, I'm looking at Rob, you know, holding my hand out, because if we ever got that situation, it would have to go to the town and, you know, try to rectify it. So, but we're fiscally prudent. We're not going to have that problem. So thank you for the update. Are there any other questions from the board on the medical benefits report? Seeing as there are none, planning committee. Andrew, I know we haven't had a planning committee meeting yet. If I may indulge, if I may indulge you, just to give a heads-up. I will read the list of upcoming meetings this month, and there are several committee meetings, well, a few of my committee meetings. But on the planning committee meeting, we will, the board will see a draft agenda today or tomorrow. I know Vincent's been working on it. We've been trying to get a time set for December 18th for planning committee to have its first meeting of the school year. And I know a few of the topics we want to cover are just an overview of where we are in the school communication plan in terms of what's being delivered and designed and so forth, so that especially new board members can get a better feel for what that is and what we can see that the public can start digesting to help with better communication and so forth. Some security updates. But I think the big nut is, Vincent, correct if I'm wrong. I thank you for reminding me of this. This season, I believe, the capital budget process and operational process coincide in the similar timeline. So in the past, we'd meet in early, or I say late winter, early spring, about the upcoming capital budget. This year, it's much sooner. So Vincent, though, is prudent that the board get a flavor for what's going to be in there as ways of planning and projects. So at least those three items will be on there. And if we could fit something else on there, we'll definitely try. Thank you. That's all I have for planning. Policy committee did not meet, but did you want to give an update?
The next policy meeting will be December 11th. That's next Wednesday at 6:30 PM at the, in our hummus room. Chairman, former chairman Vadi and I and Ms. Sobel were working on a bunch of different policy reviews at the time, which we will continue to do. Through our discussions with new candidates, we'll also be embarking on some new Board of Education bylaw revisions in review, as well as beginning the review of the school climate policy and how the new law that will, I guess, takes effect next year is going to affect that policy and other potential revisions to the, what I believe is a 19-page policy. So we're going to begin to sort of review that as well. So that'll begin next Wednesday. Thank you.
Yeah, and while I turn this into policy discussion, the bylaw discussions that might lead to potential revisions are really around some of the things that superintendent and I saw at the Cabe Conference in terms of how meetings are conducted, how agendas are formed, some FOIA updates. And I think, I forgot to mention this earlier, I believe the majority of the board is going to the Cabe New Board Member Leadership Conference on Tuesday. So we get a flavor of some of those things are, but we're just trying to keep up with some of the revisions and lessons learned from other school district lawsuits out there. So, but as those things materialize, we'll talk more about them. School modernization committee. Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, Tim, I shouldn't have asked a question.
No, just wondering in terms of, if you had mentioned it specifically to the superintendent, school climate, gathering those metrics, coming up with ideas for, that might be useful in improving school climate? That's on the agenda, basically? For policy? For policy?
It can be.
Okay.
Absolutely. Well, I was more meant it as a part of the discussion for school climate, so.
Okay, okay.
We'll definitely be discussing that.
All right, thank you.
Because if I, just so that we can review that, I know during the spring last year, a lot of the suggestions that I had made turned out to sort of be in the policy already. So it's a matter of sort of reviewing them and seeing if any tweaks need to be made to sort of help the process along. So that's what we'll be doing.
Thank you.
School modernization committee unfortunately could not meet last, was it this week? I forgot. Monday, due to the inclement weather. However, I believe Mr. Grippo would like to make an amendment to the agenda at this point, to run the replacement for Andrew. Yeah, we're doing an SMC. So while Adam's looking up the motion, I'm just going to do a point of order myself. So for those of you wondering out there, and I'll, I should have mentioned this earlier, as part of the chair role, I'm going to try to explain some of the procedural things that we do, just so that the community has an idea of why we operate and why we do certain things and what we can't do on the agenda. And as part of Freedom of Information Act, you know, agenda must be published ahead of time, I believe, 48 hours. And, you know, if there's a motion or a topic to be discussed, it should be on the agenda. And that's done so that, you know, the public can see for transparency what's happening out there and not come to a meeting and be surprised where a board, you know, just suddenly decides to put a motion on the agenda that, you know, weren't prepped for. So long story short, during this point of order, I'm saying is, to alter the agenda, which, you know, a board member, actually chair, can request, does require two-thirds majority vote to make that happen. If that passes, then the item is added to the agenda during the meeting. But by and large, we tend to make our agendas ahead of time. The only reason why this upcoming agenda modification is going to happen, we have some late-breaking news today, and so we're able to make this discussion sooner rather than later. So thank you for indulging me on this point of order. Mr. Grippo, I believe you had an amendment to add to the agenda.
Is it an amendment or a motion? I think I'm making a motion, correct?
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
A motion. Oh, a motion to amend our former...
Motion to amend this school modernization committee report to include your motion.
Okay. Then I...
Do you have a motion?
I do have a motion, yes.
We're going to learn this together.
Okay, all right. So I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Move that the Cheshire Board of Education assigns Andrew Martelli to the School Modernization Committee to replace the vacancy left by Catherine Helen.
Is there a second? Catherine Helen, second is the motion. Thank you, Catherine. Discussion, and if I can start a discussion? Thank you. Trying to follow the rules here. We're trying to be, you know, try to be less formal as we move forward. So as everyone knows, hopefully knows by now, we have a joint study group of town council and board of education. It's the School Modernization Committee. It has been formed. It has met for the first time a couple of weeks ago. I believe the next meeting is coming up on the...
The 16th.
16th, that'll be published soon. After, since the election has occurred, and I don't think the majority's changed in the town council, but certainly it's changed in the Board of Ed. And we have a vacancy now on the modernization committee where three board members are selected to participate in that, as well as three members of the town council, usually by majority representation. So with Catherine stepping down, we have a vacancy. And per the charter and the commission of that committee, once there is a vacancy on the School Modernization Committee, the town council will appoint a replacement. It's up to them. We don't control the actual replacements on the school committee, but as far as Board of Education members are concerned, the board can and vote, will vote to add members there as things change. So in this case, this is why we're doing it. And we chose Andrew Martelli in particular because of his specific background on this topic, on school construction, I believe in Waterbury, as well as the public relations aspect that goes around that. So we think he'll be a great addition and carry on some of Catherine's work in that committee. So that is the reason why we're making this motion tonight. Also, the town council has to act on this, and they would like to do so before the next committee meeting. Their next business meeting is Tuesday. So the timing worked out that we can make this motion tonight. Hopefully gets approved, I guess, under agenda for Tuesday night, and able to act on it and make Andrew's placement official. I hope that explains it. Thank you. I just don't, I do want to say thank you, Catherine, for stepping down and affording us the opportunity to backfill that position. Doesn't mean your work is done in the committee just yet. There's a lot to be done. Yeah, we'll find a way to keep you involved, obviously. Thank you. Seeing as there's no other discussion. The motion is...
Shall I read it again?
Please do, sir.
The motion is that the Board of Education assign Andrew Martelli to the School Modernization Committee to replace the vacancy left by Catherine Helen.
All those, is there a second? I already said it, I apologize. I'm just rereading the motion for clarity, so people understand what it is. We already have a second, my bad. All of those in favor? It is unanimous. Congratulations, Andrew. Is no old-new business. We're going to skip over that. There is no new business for the Board of Education. That being said, is there a motion to adjourn? Is it a comment or a motion?
It's a comment.
Mr. Grippo, you may make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't have an opportunity to comment before, but I wanted to congratulate you on being named chairman to the Board of Education. And I guess I will congratulate myself and thank you for electing me to be the vice chairman of the Board of Education. I take this position very seriously. As you know, I've had experience throughout the years running other organizations. And I hope to serve this position with distinction and honor. And I guess a wise person once told me, it's easy to burn a house down, but it's, it takes a skilled carpenter to rebuild that house. So, and I think all of us are very skilled in doing that. And I hope that we will be able to build a strong house and/or perhaps even a strong school going into the future.
So measure twice, cut once.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other comments from the board members, just to be fair? Again, I read it, Mr. Grippo just said, congratulations to everyone, new board members, new elected officers. Again, I thank you for this privilege and honor. Just the board members, I know we're all looking forward to getting to work. And so it might be challenging, but we're going to have some fun with this. So again, thank you. Big round of applause for everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?